...the first meeting that we're in 2021. And we're having secrets, having secrets about here. So we're right here and we're going to start the meetings as we call it to do with prayer and quick. And then we'll go through all of the descriptions of the solid lines of prayer and I'll just ask Reverend Teller if he can come forward and have our prayer called.
Dear Lord, thanks for the prayers to be here today. Thanks for the prayers to pray. On behalf of County Commissioner, dear Lord, we thank you, Lord, for them out in the work they do. I don't hear the meetings, but behind the scene, dear Lord, thank this county, we're a great county because of the work that they do. Lord, I still, I pray you give them the wisdom they need today at this meeting day. Give me thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the end of your mission. So last year, the vision. Guardian.
So.
At this time, we will consider a virtual events in January 14th, January 19th.
So.
Second.
All the players.
Second.
All the players.
Aye.
At this time. We have one person that has signed up for. Oh, comment. James, will you announce your last name, come forward?
Yeah, take that. My name is James Jabber. I'm a captain for American Airlines and also I have a flight school with my partner, Richard Franklin out here at the airport. Blue Mr. Pierce knows Mr. Franklin, right? So we're trying to get an aviation STEM program established with the, with the high schools here. So we have a limited amount of window of opportunity with which to pour forth this grants due by March 22nd. Part of the issue relies on the fact that it's more of a, we can apply for it, but it's more of a public grant than it is a private grant. We probably could get it, but it's, it's a tall road to hoe. But I've been working with the school system right now over CTE with Holly Poor, Dr. Holly Poor, and she's kind of helping us get this program going. So kind of giving you a little heads up of what we're trying to do and get things going with the county maybe, and the county might be able to put us. Either if we submit the grant for ourselves, you know, in conjunction with a participant like Valerie, of course, she's helping us out. And of course, I know the airport board probably be more than interested in helping us get things rolling as well. And I believe Randy Chris is online or somewhere. Is it Chris? I believe it is. He is also, I talked to him at length this morning. So trying to get support from the county would be, you know, it doesn't cost you anything, by the way. But to get support from the county for putting this program together, especially for the high schools. It's, it's a very worthy cause. It's worth up to half a million dollars if we can get it. So, you know, anything that the board can do, anything that the county can do to kind of think about this is kind of why I'm here. So I know I didn't get on the agenda. Sorry about that. Been a little bit pressing for time. The tax man has kind of been talking to me about getting my taxes done early. So that's.
Could you put together a presentation to, to present to the board? Because I'm sure that if it's something that's dealing with the school system and aviation too, I'm sure. I can't speak for everybody, but I know I can speak for myself and we'd be more willing to do whatever the county can to help you facilitate this grant.
That'd be great.
You need to have the information so we can see which way to go with it.
I know you know me. We met before, as you knew, and I knew you'd be in here today. I know Greg decided he want to take a vacation for a while. So I guess he in Mexico somewhere. Lucky man. I could use a vacation. Let me know when I can take one.
Look, if you'll get together something that, that put it on the agenda to, to kind of let us know, you know, exactly what the program does and how it works. Then we'll do what we can, or I'll do what I can to help facilitate you getting where you need to be on.
That'd be great. Sorry I didn't dress up kind of for the meeting, though.
Probably the best way for, for this to go through manager out there and she can get it through.
Valerie has already written me a letter. I'll share that with you. And so the more the merrier, the way I look at it. So. Well, all I can tell you is time is of the essence. I've never written a grant before. And I'm not much of a, as you can, I'm not much of a governmental person when it comes to the, the brick of rock of the behind the scenes. With all due respect, what you guys have to go through is pairs and pairs, and what I have to do is just fly a major airline across the country, 35,000 feet and watch the clouds go by. So, and you Caroline, we talk. So anyway, I appreciate you having me. So I'll get you something. Can I email you? I'll get your email or later.
It's on the county website.
I'll get it off the website. I'll send you something almost immediately. And then if you don't mind, can you share it? I know.
We'd like to.
I'll send it to you. Alright, thank you, everybody. Alright, thanks for having me earlier.
Do we have anybody on the phone?
We'd like to extend an invitation to our virtual participants. Anyone joining us via the Zoom app can use the raise hand feature. Joining by phone, you can do star nine at this time.
Well, the. Public comment period is over with and we will now move to here from Scott with EDC, Project Popcorn.
Alright. Thank you, Vice Chairman Green, and thank you commissioners for agreeing to hear this presentation today for Project Popcorn. Apologies in advance. I'm really not very well versed in working Mac machines, so may have a hiccup or two in this presentation. Uh, yeah, it looks like the mouse will work. You got it in PDF format?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just do the page up and down then. I've been click and drag, maybe.
I would like to welcome five commissioners to what are you going to do. Last time we talked to President in Washington, he was sleeping with his back. He didn't have a sleep on a couple of comforting of earth.
Well, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll just go ahead and start. I mean, we can kind of talk through, but again, thank you for hearing this request for Project Popcorn. This is a manufacturing project. It's a food processing operation. From what we've been told through the state of North Carolina and through the company's consultants, this company's been around for decades. And we've been told their products are widely available throughout the United States in a wide variety of grocery stores. It's our understanding they're evaluating sites in the central and eastern part of the United States for a new processing facility and distribution facility. If our community were chosen, it would mean the creation of 1,200 direct full-time jobs as a result of the project. About 1,100 of those would be in the production operations side of things. About 100 would be supervisory administrative type positions. And the investment is about 125.7 million dollars. And that would be primarily through the construction of a new facility and installation of major equipment. And the majority of these improvements will be done by the end of 2021. We don't foresee any zoning issues with the project. We think it's been zoned appropriately. We'll work with the appropriate municipal and county staff to work through that, navigate through that process. But I mainly wanted to talk about the proposed incentives for the project. Anyway, as you're aware with your existing policy, normally this project would be eligible for a level three grant because of the investment level. It's in excess of 100 million dollars. That would say grant equivalent to 85% of the new taxes paid over a five-year period. Based on the potential impact of this project for the community as a whole. We're actually proposing to the EDC that the commissioners please consider extending this grant to 10 years. And by that, I mean for the first five years, the 85% that the county normally does, and for the final five years, a 50% grant. This is a structure that was similar to what the commissioners did for Chewy a couple of years ago. Yes, sir. As far as the total capital investment, that is the building and the equipment. The Chewy project was at 55 million dollars. This project is at 125.7 million. So quite a bit of difference there. The job levels are the same, but again, about 70 or so million dollars more in investment. And as far as the breakdown of that, I think about 88 million of that is going to be invested in the first year. And about 38 million in the second year. And as far as real property, it's about 58 million of that 125.7 million dollars. So quite a bit there in the new facility and the major equipment. As far as this, again, this grant, we're looking at 10 year, first five years, 85%, second five years, 50%. But as you may recall, we did a couple of other things for the Chewy project. And again, we see these are comparable projects based on the investment in jobs. If you recall, the commissioners did approve a $400,000, what we call an equipment grant for Chewy. This was structured as a forgivable loan, forgiven after five years, about the job creation goals were met. In this case, we're proposing 900 jobs to qualify for this, this loan. But again, in this case, we're asking for a half a million dollars versus 400,000. And these funds would come from the county's economic development funds, the money that's set aside for schools or economic development. That's our understanding as to how this was dealt out last time with Chewy. And finally, what we're asking for is again, similar to Chewy's proposal. The 24-hour express permitting with the county office, which has been very well received. We're asking the commissioners, please consider waiving that fee for this project. And again, that fee is normally 2,500 dollars. Now, we understand this is a large project and we wouldn't expect the county to go along with this. We understand the state's prepared to offer quite a bit of assistance for this project as well. We're working with the company to pursue a, what we call a JDG grant, a job development investment grant for the project. It's a discretionary cash grant for new expanding companies considering North Carolina. We should know something about that fairly soon. Also, we've asked the state of North Carolina to consider any kind of infrastructure dollars out there to bring infrastructure, whatever it needs to the site. In addition, we've also asked Duke Energy to consider assistance for this project through their Carolinas Investment Fund as well. And we hope to know that fairly soon. Now, in regards to what these incentives would look like as far as the revenue for the town, we did include in your packet an estimate for 10 years worth of estimates. And again, we had a lot of assumptions to do this. You know, we know these things can stay constant. We did use the current county tax rate of 65, 75 per hundred dollars. And we also assumed that 88 million of the new construction and equipment would be done by the end of 2021. And the final 38 million or so would be done by the end of 2022. So again, that is a total of 125.7, 75 million dollars. We did try to also factor in depreciation for this as well, using the state depreciation schedules and assume 10-year lifespans for this business personal property. But what it looks like is after, during the first five incentivized years, the county would collect about 3.5 million dollars. Of course, the incentive grant during that five-year period would be just under 3 million. So the net revenue with the county would be about 529,000 dollars. For those final five years, we, the county would collect about 2.6 million. The incentive grant for that five years would be 1.3 million. And of course, that's where the 50-50 split comes in. The county would net the same amount of dollars, the 1.3 million. So if you factor that in over 10 years, you would have a total of 6.1 million dollars in tax revenue collected. The total incentive grant over 10 years to the company would be about 4.3 and the county would net about 1.8 million dollars in net revenue. How, um, yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. So after the 10 years are done, what is our net tax collection going to be revenue?
You mean over that 10-year period?
After the 10.
After the 10-year period. You'd be looking at about. It would be about 200,000 a year. I'm sorry, 400,000 a year, 400,000 a year after the grant period is done. Sorry I had it split, but you know, about 400,000 dollars. Yeah. And of course, there should be, I would assume some reinvestment in the property by the company and new equipment, and that may factor into that, that bottom line as well. But that's our best guess, best estimate for this. And, you know, we have a project of this scope. There are other additional impacts that the community would feel. This could be anything from, you know, suppliers popping up in the area, restaurants, stores seeing an increase in their sales because of the additional revenue that would be generated by the project. And so what the EDC did, my understanding is the commissioners got this Friday. I'm apologies for the delay. We had to contract out this report. So it didn't come until Friday, but we did try to contract with the company to give us the additional, what we call indirect impacts of this project on the community. And as far as this study can tell, I mentioned the 1,200 direct jobs will be created. We also think that about just under 1,500, 1,474 exactly, indirect jobs will be created as a result of this, this project. And the study estimates an average wage for those of about 15 dollars and 94 cents per hour. And then as far as, if you combine the direct and indirect jobs created, that's you, 2,600 or so jobs. We'd have about 92 million dollars in annual total earnings. That's your payrolls basically for, for all these companies. Now that would be after five years, once all these new jobs are established and up and going. So we can have a total payroll for all these jobs of about 92 million. And out of that, the study estimates that there'd be about just under 51 million dollars in consumer expenditures. Again, after this five-year period, that is money spent on new clothes, cars, dining out, and just basic food, things of that nature. In addition to that, and this is, it's, I guess, a little tricky, but you see the 7.9 million in annual deposits for area banks. Our study from that study, that's forecasting like 15 years into the future as to what those revenues would be for these area banks. Don't want to get too far into weeds on that, but again, that's like a long-term projection for what you see as far as deposits in local banks. Of course, one of the more directing impacts to the county is sales tax revenue. This, this study also estimated local and state sales tax generated as a result of this project. And again, this is after five years. It's projecting about 792,000 dollars in local sales tax generated on an annual basis for the county. And about 1.6 million in state sales tax generated. Of course, you know, this factors in what we call retail leakage, you know, people spending money outside of the county, but still it's a nice little annual sales tax boost to our county budget. So, and again, there's other things in this study and I mean, I'll be glad to try to talk about those best I can. A lot of it's, you know, just pure stats, but I think it kind of demonstrates that there would be more than just the direct jobs and direct benefit to the county tax base that would come out of this project. So anyway, just to kind of move back to the original request from EDC. Again, what we're asking for the commissioners to please consider is a 10-year incentive grant for Project Popcorn. Again, that's 85% for the first five years, 50 for the final five years. Also a $500,000 equipment grant utilizing the county's economic development funds and would be structured as a forgivable loan. And finally, waiver of the 24-hour expedited permitting fee, which is 2,500 dollars. So in closing with Project Popcorn, again, you're looking at the opportunity to create 1,200 direct new jobs as a result of this project, and that would be over three years. And of course, during the first five years of the incentive period, we'll then collect about 529,000 dollars in new tax revenue. And over 10 years, 10-year cycle of this grant, about 1.8 million dollars in new tax revenue. And finally, this would be an opportunity to bring a respected manufacturer to our community. That's a lot to hit the board with. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
500,000 dollars of equipment right. Would come out of the money that the state sends us.
They, they collect, I think, from service fees and things of that nature.
That money is what the primary things we're supposed to use in the economic development. And so that would really not use tax. Private tax.
It's a sales tax revenue, basically, the county collects. Yes, sir. In regards to the project itself, it's our understanding, and this, hopefully this is the case, that we would have a decision by mid-March as far as a location. And we do know there is some competition. It's our understanding that there's a site in Virginia that's our primary competition for this project. Yes, sir, that's correct. And it's my understanding that the county will have to pay at least half of the premiums for the employees to qualify for it.
No, I would just remind everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just remind everybody how important Chewy was and still is to us. Created a lot of interest in the development community. And when they see another 500,000 square foot facility and another 1,200-plus jobs come in here, it'll create even more stir. So thank you, Scott, for what y'all are doing and we expect to see more of these.
Well, I, I do recall when Chewy did select Rowland County, President Rod Crowder said, these are projects with that number of jobs you see once, you know, every 10, 20 years. So I think it speaks to the attractiveness of Rowland County that we're a finalist for another one of this scope within two years after the Chewy announcement. So.
Scott, speaking of Chewy. Are they following along with their plan and how, how do you track that?
Well, as far as their plan for job creation, I mean, the, the original agreements the county had, I believe, called for the creation of like 1,250 jobs. And they had exceeded that number already. I think they're probably a couple of hundred jobs over that now. But as far as tracking it, they are required through the state to turn in quarterly reports. These include the NCI, NCU 101, the quarterly reports on employees with wages. And that's all part of the documentation to show the jobs are there. And when they accomplish provide to the county, if not the county request, it's there is documentation to show the employees are there and are being paid.
And these are like for popcorn, the. 900 jobs, so there'd be 900 full-time equivalents?
Yes, ma'am, for the equipment grant. Now for the county incentive agreement, because it's a longer term, we would require the full 1,200 jobs for the, the tax incentive agreement. But for purchase of this forgivable loan in five years, we're going with the pretty much to equal, is that the 900 jobs? But to get the county tax benefits, it would be the full 1,200.
So the. Six, almost 16 dollars an hour is that is employee wage you allow?
Well, what?
Is that benefits instead?
Well, it's our understanding that the average salary is in excess of 17 dollars an hour, and that does not include benefits for this. And then as far as the 16s you're talking about, Vice Chairman Green, that, that was an estimate on the indirect jobs would be created as a result of this, that additional 1,400 or so jobs. So that one is just an estimate, but as far as this project, the direct jobs, we've been told in excess of 17 dollars an hour is the average wage for it.
And then 17 dollars an hour wages plus.
Plus benefits. Yes, sir, that's correct.
So they can ask the union, that's just 40,000 dollars a year, when you start talking about benefits.
Benefit package. Yes, sir.
Yes, we'd like to invite any of our remote participants. If you'd like to raise your hand or do star nine to be recognized.
Alright. Here enough. Close the clock here.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the EDC's Project Popcorn with the incentive program as presented.
Alright, we've been having all the flavors. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Scott, just Scott, Scott, just Scott. Alright, next. Person up here is, is Board of Education. All right, next, person up here is Board of Education, asking certain property. This plan, speaking to us, is that really?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Well, give it a stack up for the presentation to hit the screen. Okay, thank you. During the Board of Education's January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one Board of Education meeting, the board declared Faith Elementary School and Enigville Elementary School surplus properties at the end of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. And another piece of property we have listed on here, Zion Street in Landis, the board had previously declared its surplus well. So, as you know, the general statute requires us to offer the properties that we've declared surplus, offer it to the Board of Commissioners, see if you're interested or you want those properties prior to the board moving forward with exposure. On the next slide, on the next one, there you go, the three properties, this gives you a little brief rundown of the three properties that were declared surplus, Enigville Elementary School, of course, Enigville Avenue, China Grove. It's approximately nine acres, and you know, it has the school building and some other associated structures. It actually was built in nineteen thirty-six, but there were some additions and renovations in nineteen forty-one. So, the board had declared that surplus after this school year. And then Faith Elementary School, Faith on School Street, there's approximately twelve acres there, school building, associated structures, and then it was constructed in nineteen twenty-nine, and the board declared its surplus after this school year. And then we have a small parcel, just under an acre, that is three-oh-five South Zion Street, Landis, which is really across the street from Core Your Life Middle School. And it has that lot, point-nine-two, and it has about a twenty-one-thousand-square-foot classroom structure on that site, and it was constructed in nineteen forty-four. Those are the three properties. And then on the next slide, you should see a layout of Enigville. That just gives you, it's just a basic layout map that shows the streets and how it's situated on the site. Then the next slide will have Faith Elementary, shows the property there, all field area, how the building's laid out on that site. Then the other, the last map, the next slide, it shows Zion Street, and the area that before declared surplus is on the right side of your screen, there's a box that's a greenish-yellow rectangle. That's the area of the property and the structure there that you see on the screen. It's just beneath the north arrow on that map. So that's the point-nine-two acres that our board has declared surplus well. So, what we would ask of the commissioners this afternoon is if these are any properties that commissioners are interested in or if you would want. If not, we would ask that you release the Board of Education to move forward with the surplus in these properties as soon as we are completed with using them. Be glad to try to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
I was trying to figure out what the building is used for on Zion Street. On the other side, football stadium is at the post, but there aren't any over there. Just wondering what that was.
There's a lot of background noise. For some reason, I'm having difficulty hearing commissioners. I apologize, but there's a lot of background. I was having a hard time hearing the question. We may have to ask our technology folks to relay the message.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Green is asking if you could explain what the property on Zion Street was formerly used for.
It was a multi-level classroom building. It was a classroom building, and it's probably been five or six years ago, six years or so ago, we used that building. And because of numbers that have declined, and we were having young children having to cross the street to use the classroom building, we stopped using it a number of years ago because we had room in the main building, and it really was a safety issue with them crossing the street, number one. Number two, we had enough space in the existing in the main building. And since it was constructed in forty-one, I think there were a lot of issues, a lot of maintenance items on the building, and so our board decided that we would no longer use that facility.
Mr. Van, I got a question. It may sound kind of strange to you, but it's important to me. You're talking about surplus in Enigville School, and I've not seen any plan. What you're going to do with them students that currently go there?
That, we have a plan that our board has approved. Those students go to two other schools. The vast majority of them go to Landis, and the other group goes to Millbridge. So, Enigville is, our board has approved the closure of both Faith and Enigville, and Enigville students go to Millbridge and Landis. And the Faith students right now are redistricted, and they would go to Shive, Rockwell, Granite, and Coontz would be the four schools that would accept the Faith student.
With you redistricting and sending students to Landis as the current facility, minus the building, you want a surplus, is it going to be adequate to services children?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It will. And it brings the utilization rate up more into a reasonable range, and that's even if all of our remote students come back to brick and mortar. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we opened a virtual school, and many of our students now attend virtual school instead of brick and mortar. So that even reduced more numbers than our brick and mortar schools. So, that's all the more reason why our board chose to do the redistricting and then close these two elementary schools.
What is your estimate, if the students do go back to classroom learning, what is your estimate with the new redistricting for the number of children that would be going to Landis?
We would, Landis would pick up a base student only. Landis would pick up one-hundred-and-eleven students. That's base students. We have a lot of students that come from out of district or from other areas, but the redistricting plan right now would, Landis would accept a hundred-and-eleven additional students, base students. And I think-
What would be the total number of students with those a hundred-and-eleven coming to school there?
One second, and I'll tell you. I can get you that exact number, but you're somewhere in the limit that they all would come back. I think you're probably close to the five-hundred range, but I'll, I can get you that information. I would have to pull that and get you the exact numbers. But their utilization rate would be much better than what we're looking at right now with the additional students. No, I said that somewhere in the neighborhood. I can get you the exact number.
How many seats are in that school?
Capacity of that school is about six, yeah.
You broke up, Anthony. We couldn't hear you.
The capacity of, capacity of Landis is about six-sixty.
Internet says five-hundred and four kids there already, and a hundred, a hundred additional.
That, that may have been, may have been, is your number pre-COVID, because right now, we have quite a few students that are remote instead of in seats and brick and mortar.
We're assuming that you're talking about getting rid of the school and creating, you know, a mountain of log, it's going to be difficult to build a school down there. So, we're talking about having school passing down there probably for the next few years until a new school is rebuilt.
It's, I got part of it, but we are looking at increasing the utilization of the seats that we do have and reducing the number of the schools that we have. All the numbers that we have run and put together and met with the principal, they're confident that they can accept the number of students that we have redistricted, even if all of the virtual remote students return to brick and mortar.
Mr. Van? Can you hear me?
Yes, I barely can hear you.
Okay. So, has the, you know, my understanding, living down there, that there's a possibility of a very large housing project could be built down there very soon. Has that been presented to the board in any way?
I think that the board is familiar with the possibility, but, but to my knowledge, there's not been extensive conversations pertaining to that.
So what would, suppose that would happen, which my understanding is probably it will. What would happen then? You'd have to redistrict again?
Well, there's always that possibility of having to redistrict again in a number of years. But currently, currently, right now, across the district, you know, we have approximately five-thousand empty seats across our district. So, we have quite a number of, quite a number of empty seats, and that was pre-COVID, was approximately five-thousand empty seats across the district.
I think this project is probably within a couple miles of that school. But I had a question about Faith. Let's correct, you stick that question. You good?
I can hear you now.
I'm good, go ahead. Hey, so my understanding with Faith, that there's already been a very substantial offer made for the building there?
We have received an offer for the property, but of course, we're not in any position to do anything until, until you commissioners would say we would not want it, and then we would go back to our board that's coming Monday, and then let them know the outcome of this meeting, and then we'll take direction from there.
Generally speaking, if you don't have the need for Faith and you're going to surplus it, and that you were, are going to sell it, what would happen with the furniture? Would the furniture go with the building?
That would be something that we would have to negotiate with the possible buyer. I know typically, typically, we take furniture out of old structures and distribute it if it's needed into other schools. In this situation, to my knowledge, we do not have a high demand for elementary school furniture at this time, so that would be something that we would have to negotiate with the purchaser. Certainly something that we could negotiate with the purchaser. The things in the schools that normally that we would remove are things that are controlled door access or those type of camera items that are tied into our system. Those are things that we would remove prior to handing over the building. But furniture is one of those that certainly could be negotiated if the person cared for it, wanted it.
So just, I guess, from my knowledge, if there are five-thousand seats open, and you don't have a high demand for elementary furniture at this point, if you couldn't leave it with the building, you'd have to pay somebody to move it and pay for storage somewhere?
That's correct. Sometimes, sometimes it's more economical and more feasible for us to leave it in the structure and try to remove.
I just am in favor of us not having interest in Faith, but I think that, at least, I would like for the board to think about, at least the recommendation, we have no control, but recommending they keep the furniture with the building for the new occupant. Sounds like that'd probably save the taxpayers some money there.
That's something that we, our board, I'm sure, would consider, and we normally look at it from a cost savings for us. Like you said, many times, it's much better for us to leave it than it is to try to spend money to remove.
Mr. Kaski, we've got no use for furniture. If you've ever been to the county warehouse, it's busted with the same furniture that we don't need. So, I don't see any benefit, and I was wanting to not include that in the bid that's been placed on Faith. My big concern is, I'm not seeing any numbers, hard numbers, as far as your redistricting plan. And what Mr. Kaski was speaking, all the growth potential in the southern part of the county is tremendous, including even some overlap coming up from Conatus and all these other municipalities down that way. I know that we want to reduce our maintenance costs, and I know we want to reduce our energy consumptions, but at the same time, you know, I'd hate to sell a building that is twenty-one-thousand square feet, and then next year, you're coming to us saying, "Oh, well, we need a new school because the other school's too small." So- So I I would propose, and this is just myself, that we go ahead and vote on the faith school, and I'd like to see some other numbers for any bill and the projected growth potential for faith before we uh decide on those two projects.
Right. The way we're gonna have to do this, understanding if if you're not happy about that, is that we'll take a motion that will just include the faith school, and we'll vote on that. And um then and then we'll just table the the other. If if you want to, you want the school board to get back to us.
I'd just like to have as much information as I can to make a decision.
Does that include the Landis?
Yes, because the my concern, and I think uh vice chairman agreed ahead upon it, once the redistricting is done, that school has capacity. So if there's any growth that comes into that area like this new development, I've been seeing for two years, all of a sudden they build a hundred fifty houses. Now we don't have capacity in that school, which we would have if we maintained that building that's being asked to be surplus. So I would not have a problem revisiting the surplus of the building after we see what happens over the next two years. Just because right now, you know, we just can't afford to go out and build a fifty million dollar school again, so. Um I'll make the motion to pull out the faith building, faith school uh and make the motion to surplus that one and table the other two schools for further information.
Would you uh just amend your motion to encourage leaving the furniture?
I would definitely amend the motion to encourage leaving the uh the furniture inside the faith building along with the purchase price.
One second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. No, any opposed? Uh, Mr. Van, what uh what I think we're asking you here is if somebody could make a presentation to us about the plans of the school district for the south South Rowland area uh in case that uh it sounds like this school is going to be at maximum capacity at this point, and what the other schools in the surrounding area look like as far as capacity is concerned. So that we have, we either do or we do not have enough capacity around there to take an increase if there's uh projects that are being built. And then if if we can get, we don't have any information about that now, and if we could get that information, then we would vote uh on these other two schools at that point in time.
Okay, uh that that's not an issue, Commissioner. I'll be glad to do that. Uh we will pull, uh put our information together and come back to you at a later date uh. Provide that information.
Do we need a formal motion to table it, or that was a formal motion, yes. Thank you, Mr. Van.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, I guess Mr. Pruitt is the only person here with the health department, environmental services. Adrian Pruitt, thank you for being with us today.
Uh thank you, Commissioners. Hope they're right as well. All right, so we are making progress. Uh as you can see in our numbers there, from the fourth through the fifteenth of January, we uh well inspections completed. Uh twenty, twenty-two permit requests and only two waiting. Uh eighty-four site visits, twenty-six applications, uh source site evaluations requested. Uh so we had twenty-two waiting. Um improvement permits uh completed. We're eighteen, uh twenty-six requests. We have not had individual just solid evaluation requests from improvement permit requests, so these numbers are going to be uh identical. Uh existing septic systems, uh we haven't had many of those lately. As you can see, we had one and uh one is waiting. Uh nitrate samples, uh when taken, uh the lab had had some issues and the car uh one day they were closed. So we have to work around that in the state laboratory schedule and taking these water samples. And again, all these, the nitrates, nitrate applications, waiting are all from kits for new wells, so it's just one component of a three-component kit taking on a new well. Uh pesticides, we have not had any of those. Um final septic inspections, uh next next graph below. Uh from the fourth through the fifteenth, we had ten final inspections, twelve well graphs, and these are called in day of uh from the septic installers or well drillers. And uh complaints visited and complaints, we're getting quite a few complaints, uh but the weather is causing a lot of septic issues.
You just explained what a complaint is. It's not a complaint of the uh environmental services.
Correct, correct. A complaint is is coming from the citizens of Rowland County uh that uh have either noticed something or neighboring property or something that they believe may be a a septic system, um a well or something that may not be properly functioning. Uh so this is not a complaint on environmental health, but complaints of concerned citizens. Um individual applications, so there were thirteen individual applications and fourteen builder applications, so we saw a pretty pretty high influx or we're even um from that that sort of weeks, and uh we were at two-week, three-day backlog. As of last Friday, we were at a two-week backlog. It's not in your information here, I'm just gonna throw that in there. But we also received forty-three applications in the last two weeks, so we have got a major influx of uh development, I believe, coming um that we're gonna have to try to get ahead of. This is typical spring, uh heading into the spring boom um that I've noticed over the years. Uh scrolling down, this is a different computer. Uh scrolling down to the block of the first to the fifteenth again, of January, next, there we go. Oh, too far. Can I go up? Can go to the one above that, or should we have set of charts above that? There we go. Yes, there'd be number of source site evaluations. Uh one one more, next chart up, next page up, I guess. There we go. So fell on the way, fell on the page break. Um so what we're looking at there are the number of source site evaluations um made each day, uh well evaluations made each day. You see each individual inspector. I apologize, I must have hit right on a page break uh there, but you're looking at the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. Um on the chart to the left and the chart to the right with a number of permits issued each day. So we see that. Next page gives a total total tally of those. You see tally, uh site evaluations for wells and septic, soil evaluations to the left, uh to the right would be number of permits issued. The next chart would be a number of evaluation, just site and soil evaluations, and number of hours worked per inspector on a daily basis, and it's tallied, there we go. So you can see the number of source site evaluations to the left and hours worked per inspector to the right. Food lodging numbers will be below that, and also here on the page break. So we have a number of inspections completed, uh next page that we go there. So number of inspections completed, uh I'm gonna go off to the right or left. Uh sorry, different. Actually, uh those numbers are slightly off because they did not get uploaded. Uh each individual inspector has to upload their inspections. We can't see them, so once they get uploaded, maybe they upload today, some upload, you know, every other day. Uh but you see uh the next chart down, the remaining part portion of it, we go down. There there we go. So we see twenty-nine inspections. So that thirty-three inspections and an average of two-point-eight inspections, uh percent completed of required inspections. And you see the inspection tally of thirty-four-point-nine-five, which is inspections starting from fiscal year July first to today, so. Uh we did you guys a little bit because we have two inspectors that are active at currently at the moment versus the one inspector we had. So one came back from leave.
So we only have two inspectors active at the moment?
Yeah, correct. That's all we have.
Okay, and the third one's out on maternity leave or one of the two?
We have two, two total.
And one's out on maternity?
No, just two two total inspectors. That's all we have in the food lodging program, yes. One just came back from maternity leave. Yes, so that's that's tallying. Sorry about that.
Okay, now, Adrian, um I was looking at this earlier, a little confused.
Mm-hmm.
Um so if you were to break down by month, and you've got total required inspections of sixteen, sixty-seven, um what are we looking at per month as to how many inspections we need to get done?
That we would need to get done? Uh so that's a that's a difficult thing to say because these inspections include verification visits, so if they they show that there's an issue, they have to put them on notice and they have to go back and verify. So verification, it 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 could be, every place can have a verification, some may not have verifications. So it'd be difficult to, I can break that down, just numbers and say, per month, sixteen, sixty-seven, so it'd be a little over three. Uh two hundred, two, no, 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 a hundred and fifty a month roughly that we need to require to be inspected just to hit that, but then you have category ones, twos, threes, and four restaurants which require, which are mixed in there too, so it'd be one establishment, category four would need four inspections, which are mixed in the total number of inspections required, so if you figure a hundred and fifty roughly a month, uh without having a calculator on me, that would need to be done, might include the verification, suspensions, revisits.
So total of the data, then we have a hundred and eighty-seven inspections completed?
Uh yes, and that would be in the week from October the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so for the year of, so far this year, it's it's roughly thirty-five.
Okay, does the state um look at our completions um as a fiscal year or calendar year?
Uh when I looked at it, they sent out a link and you actually log in, and they sent out one that was showing the twenty-twenty you know, it would be the nineteen-twenty, so it's fiscal year, and I was trying to get that data, but it only showed category one, category two restaurants. There was said completed. Um I'm not sure how it's in the category threes or fours. Yeah, because I was I was trying to get that data to show, you know, have what the total percentage based on true completions given and reported to that estate. It was sixty-eight percent, but it only showed category ones and twos, so I didn't feel like it was relevant.
So we have two full-time food lodges, and we have one more position than we can.
We have two more available positions. We have one that I believe we're trying to fill and available, which I have reposted on the listserv to try to get some more candidates.
We still have the bonus and everything.
Mm-hmm. We've, it's kind of slowed down. We're getting intern or we 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 classify as intern. People that have a four-year's college degree um may have environmental health related background, other than their degree start and of studies, uh that may have previously worked for a county. They'd be classified as an intern. We may have to go that route to to we we need more than two inspectors, honestly. We've got to have something. And I'm I'm scared to wait much longer. Uh we could be training someone and, you know, I we're gonna get farther behind. We have called up, um I can't tell you when I came here, in March of last year, there were a number of restaurants from two thousand and eighteen was the last inspection. We're almost completely into two thousand and twenty now, so we've at least called it by two years on inspections.
Um I want to go back up to site evaluations. So our um um my question was, is we hired the consultants.
Yep.
And when did they come on board? Was it first week in January?
I gave them the uh twenty, it was actually twenty, it'd be twenty-one, because two, one site had two um application on the same site. Uh it was actually the December the seventh is when I gave it to them. The it would be the very top chart. I just got a double star beside it for the source site evaluations and improvement permit, which indicates uh that that was twenty source site evaluations given to the consultants. Uh keep going. Next next chart up. There we go. So it'd be the week of December or two weeks from December seventh or December eighteenth. They didn't actually get to the site until I think it was January the sixth or seventh because they're backlog, but they're completed. All those have been returned to us with either finished uh permits or denials.
Okay, so we've sort of met the goal of two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
My question is, is with this new batch of applications coming in, what's your estimation as far as are we going to need to continue to contract them?
I'll be honest, a new new flux that we just had of forty-three applications in two weeks is uh worrisome. It's it's a little earlier than I would have anticipated because this is the last week, two weeks of January. Uh I would have thought this coming more in February. It seems to be a little bit early. My worry is that this continues, that we're gonna continue to rise in this, and we won't be able to catch up. Uh again, we won't be able to maintain two weeks. If we were to
Were they all from, for one development or?
So that, no, no, they were from all over the county. Uh there were a lot of developers in this one too. Um I can give you some of the numbers you'll see uh soon, but there was fourteen applications from builders and twenty-nine application individuals, so they're all over the county. It's kind of spread out. Um but it's fairly typical from what I've seen uh since I started doing this. January into the spring boom, I think people are getting a little bit ahead this time, so.
I wonder if it would be helpful for you just to talk with your compatriot down south in Cabarrus and just, or if they are talking to us.
Cabarrus County Health Alliance?
Um just to kind of see when their growth really starts to explode like what their increases were presented or something, to kind of try and give us some guidance, because I agree with Craig. I mean, this thing is gonna just blow up. And I don't want us to get back into a situation like we were in where we're like six and eight weeks out.
I don't see that happening. Um I was thinking we're probably, my thought is, because we have a full staff, um when we're six to eight to ten weeks out, they're part-time individuals only. They were working. I would say a three to four week would be my guess.
Okay, but the contractors are still working right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how many more um inspections have you gotten that were signed?
But I just got back the other ones. Like at the end of last week, I just got back the other twenty that I gave them, the permits. So I haven't given them. I went with those back before I started delegating them more out to them. Uh because I had some, I had a few revisions that needed to be made, and I I'd be honest, I only issued nine permits and the rest of them were denials, so. Um about a fifty-fifty run of that, so so it was not good.
Well, I I'm concerned if we're gonna have this, like I said, big explosion of development that we make sure we have enough staff continuing on, whether it's our own staff or to keep their contract going to cover if we need to bring them back in.
Yeah, I can get them an additional twenty. That's that's not an issue right now. We have forty-three applications, some are in developments. Um it's a handful here and there. Uh our main developments came in through this uh of consecutive lots of four, I think it was two sets of four or five lots uh at one time, the fourth through fifteenth, which we've already pulled those, and we're waiting on some stuff to get done. But I can get them actually twenty more. Uh.
Well, I want our, you know, our guys busy first, right?
Yeah, 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 I mean, yes.
I don't want to lose that that connection because didn't it take about two months to get them hired?
Yes, but I I think they're willing to go about, they have their own backlog of about a month, so. You know, if I can get them twenty, they're fine with that. I can get them thirty at one time. It's just, it it's scary for me to give them forty, and when am I gonna get back? I can get them thirty at one time, it's just, it's scary if I'm gonna give them forty and when am I gonna get back? And when am I gonna get back with them because they're so busy? I just, I'm having a harder time pinning them down on dates and times and we're getting a lot of calls. You know, when am I gonna get this, when am I gonna get that? So that does, that's the only thing that's been difficult.
We may be getting a little bit over our skis here. We understand that your board of directors wants to decide about the contracts and number of personnel and this type of thing that were hired there with you. But it, it seems like that you folks are making progress, a little bit over two weeks. Seems like good progress compared to the five, six weeks that we had talked about not too long ago. Any other questions or Adrian at this point?
Adrian, I think you'll agree that you're gonna see an influx with warm weather and dry weather coming. I, I will share this with you and I'll share this with the board. I was a little bit taken back the other day when I found out contractor called me. Found out you had one of your inspectors at the COVID vaccination direct of traffic. And I don't think that's both of them were there?
I was here, I was there and one of my inspectors.
Okay, well, I got the phone call and they were like, well, why aren't they out inspecting my, inspecting my permits? It's because you could get somebody else to direct traffic. And I, I fell back on that and saying, you know, is this proper use of manpower at this point in time when this is such a critical thing and it's gonna, it's gonna exponentially get larger? So I would ask you, if, if you're directed by your director again to do that, please let the county manager know, because there's plenty of people that have called to volunteer to direct traffic out there. And I think, you know, a volunteer doesn't have the capabilities that you guys do. So I just wanted to share that with you, that you're being watched.
Yeah, I was, I was one of the two directing traffic. We, we got to get, we got to see every person that came through there.
Were you volunteered or drafted?
Drafted. Yeah, well, I think it had something to do with, uh...
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's being on the health board of the state.
Um, but we, we do know that there have been, we know that there's one civic club here who has taken on the responsibility of volunteering to help with those things and hopefully that you won't be asked to do that again when you're doing county, supposed to be doing county work. Well, that's county work also, but a little bit out of, out of what I think is your line of expertise.
I didn't have any recs, so I did pretty good at tra, directing traffic as well. But, but no, I, I do agree, but, you know, I think there was some, trying to give some relief to some other departments that volunteered, you know, before and it's a lot that goes into that, but I don't want to speak for that. I'll stick to septics.
We thank you, it looks like you're making progress from there again, that we want you to make progress from. And so we'll continue to hear from you and hope things continue to go well.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Wonderful evening.
We're down to the important stuff now. Rowland County litter mitigation updates. Rowland County staff moved ten thousand two hundred and sixty pounds of roadside debris and litter during the two-week period beginning of Monday, January the eleventh through Friday, January the twenty-first. Please don't throw any trash outside. If you're going to the landfill and it blows off, stop and pick up your trash. We certainly would appreciate that. The National Department. We have any questions about the...
Mission report, the board's been there, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, multiple board appointments. Central Atlanta Economic Commission. Chairman Ed had to fill the public service seat on the commission and his current term will expire February twenty-eighth. Chairman Ed wishes to serve another term, which would expire February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion that would approve, Mr. Ed?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Town of Faith Planting Board ETJ Cynthia Herman applies for reappointment and has approved, the term will expire January the twenty-third, first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve Cynthia Herman?
Second. All in favor, say aye. Rowland County Volunteer Fire Department Fire Conditioners Chris Hutchinson and Johnny Dickerson apply for reappointment. Term will be for two years, years expire February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve Chris Hutchinson and Johnny Dickerson?
Second. Mike, second. All in favor, say aye. There's one remaining open seat, and Jeanne Wookley Weaver applied and approved her term. It also expired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion for Jeanne Wookley Weaver?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That, my friends.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.